Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Open the public hearing at 6:03. I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. This public hearing was requested by John Holcraft in regards to a denial from the zoning enforcement officer for a sign located at 17 West Main Street. I will call Mr. Holcraft, who is already here. The floor is yours, sir.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This, um... The appeal for Mr. Holcraft is for a sign on his property?
Correct.
And there is no cease and desist for that sign on the property? The cease and desist for Mr. Thomo is for...
The pets.
The raising of commercial animals.
We have to schedule that. That's not for tonight. The meeting was properly posted for what we're discussing tonight.
There's no cease and desist.
We're not discussing that matter this evening, sir. That meeting has not been scheduled yet.
I thought you said we're talking about 17 West Main Street.
Correct. There's two issues there. The one we're discussing tonight is the denial from the zoning enforcement officer for a sign.
That's the one that I am talking about. Maybe I didn't make myself clear.
No, you didn't.
Okay. So, he's doing an administrative appeal for a sign permit?
Correct.
And I don't see any cease and desist here?
There's not. You're referencing the pet complaint. We have not scheduled that.
Oh, okay, because that's what is attached to this packet.
That packet shouldn't be there. The only thing that really should be there is his request for this evening's meeting, which was handwritten by himself dated on 8/17/2017.
Okay. Then, in that case, I'm going to make a point of order for the following. There is no, um... Well, let's go through the process. That's fine.
We're making a point of order.
No, I'm going to hold off on that point of order.
So, if you have any issues, I ask you to address them now before we move forward.
Uh, no. Let's move forward.
Mr. Holcraft, again, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm going to say something to the ZVA board for starters. This board is the most unprofessional. You don't follow the protocol. You don't follow open meeting laws. You don't post things properly. Half of you people don't even know what the bylaws are. You don't know what you're talking about. You are so screwed up, you post things in the paper.
All right. That's enough. If you'd like to discuss what's at hand, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm going to continue finishing what I have to say.
You're not going to continue because this is a professional board.
Okay. So, anyway, I hope tonight that you show at least a little professionalism and this circusry that we have in this town comes to an end. Maybe tonight we can start somewhere on this board. Okay. With that being said, in short, I requested a sign on 17 West Main Street, a freedom of speech sign, seeing that we've got a selectman, Punk Schneider, here, trying to take the other one away, which won't happen. So, a group of people said, "Let's get another one up." So, I'm putting in for another one on 17 West Main Street, which is not in the bylaws. And even if it is or isn't, it's a constitutional right. I don't care what district it is. If it's in my house, residential, I can still put it up. So, I'm coming here to do this the right way. I'm going to meet the zoning sign bylaws when I put this sign up. So, with that being said, this is not a political sign now. This is a freedom of speech sign, okay? So, I was denied by the zoning officer, which, once again, he doesn't know how to read the bylaws either. So, that's why I'm here tonight. So, it's very simple. I'm putting in for a permit to put it up. That's it. It's that simple. Now, if we don't want to do... I know how the board's going to vote. That's fine. This is... If you violate the First Amendment, civil rights, we have different avenues we can take. I don't even need to come here to get a permit from you because I can just wheel in a tractor-trailer box and put a sign 10 by 20 on it, which I can do. That's one avenue I can take. So, the floor is yours.
We have town council presence. I'm not even going to entertain the zoning enforcement officer's interpretation of the bylaw. We do have bylaws that we follow. I do have a copy. Jeff, do you have a copy in front of you?
I have a copy in front of me.
In regards to the denial of the zoning enforcement officer, was he justified legally?
I spoke with the zoning enforcement officer and asked him exactly what his rationale was. And if you take a look under your Section 10B, the sign is in a business district. There was, at least on the application that I read, something about naming some type of horse farm or horse area in addition to lights goings on. So, to the extent that this is a business sign, if you take a look, it would be a freestanding sign under V3. And as such, it would need to be no more than 35 square feet. I think he probably met that. It would also need to be... It can't exceed 15 feet in height. And I believe his application shows that. But what the big issue here is, to the extent that this, the number three applies, is that it has to be located at least 10 feet from a public right-of-way. And there's no indication that it does that, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that what would need to be, because that's the OT or the town have right-of-way, we would need to see a block plan that would show exactly where that sign would be so that we could determine whether or not it in fact met the bylaw. And if you take a look down just at the general sign regulations, I guess to the extent that it's other than a business sign, it could only be 16 square feet. But I think more importantly, under C5, signs shall not be erected or maintained at any location which shall unduly obstruct traffic visibility or reduce visibility at entrance, exit, or intersection. So, again, the zoning enforcement officer just wants to see a block plan to find out where this sign's going to make sure that it meets the zoning bylaw. With respect to the signs, you know, Mr. Holcraft is right to a certain extent that there are protections. And there are cases out there, a recent Supreme Court case in 2015, Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, where a town bylaw, sign bylaw, was challenged and made it all the way up to the Supreme Court. And it's a difficult decision to read because there are multiple concurring opinions, descending opinions, and then majority opinion. But I think what is reasonably taken out of that, as long as the regulation is content-neutral and designed for ensuring public safety, that it's likely to stand the challenge. And I think that with respect to what we outlined here, or what I just outlined here to you, I believe that in this instance, that would sustain such a challenge. Because this is really, it's content-neutral. All that's worried about is safety.
So, there's a ruling for content neutrality? If that's a word? So, they're not even obiding to the constitutional rights of a citizen?
What the court looks at is if the regulations are content-neutral. In other words, it can't regulate one specific political sign more...
You're talking about the bylaws as opposed to the sign itself?
Well, I'm talking about both in this instance. Your bylaw appears to be with respect to the setbacks and whatnot. It's content-neutral. I think it's clear that this bylaw, what this bylaw is interested in is protecting sight points and not having some giant sign in the way.
But not what's on the sign?
But not what's on the sign. And your zoning enforcement officer denied it because it didn't meet the zoning bylaw, not because he thought it was going to say X, Y, and Z.
So, we do not have a copy of the application, so we do not see what was applied for? So, there were no distances?
A point of information, please, has to do with my original point of order. It does say here on the appeal, Z... It's not copied well, I guess, or not written well. I'm not sure which... The ZEO, so I guess it says it was denied by the ZEO. Is that the building inspector or is it Mr. Thomo?
The zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Thomo.
It's Mr. Thomo. So, why isn't there a denial here? I was... I mentioned at the point of order a cease and desist, which I assumed was going to be there, but...
Well, it's not a cease and desist.
I was incorrect, apparently. So, where's the denial? There's no denial here. So, how do we know he even denied it? We don't have anything to go by here. This information's not complete.
I've spoken with Nick, and it was denied. I did not see the application. And we have town council stating that it was denied.
Nick's pretty good at denials, so where is it?
Thank you, sir. Just pass it down to him.
Mr. Chairman, would you please straighten out Mr. Simons on this 17 West Main Street, please?
I don't think I can.
We're not talking about the cease and desist.
I know.
We're talking about a denial on a sign.
Right.
And this gets back to my question, Jeff. In that application, were there 10-foot setbacks listed? You stated that the...
In fact, it's right here, Mr. Chairman. If you could just show them that, Mr. Zoning Enforcement Officer.
That's the application?
There are not.
This is what he submitted?
And I would suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that those are typically done with a by engineer or somebody who can just block this out.
An Asbilt.
Yeah, exactly.
I can answer all those questions.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
The town council gave a lot of information about signs that I actually did not understand. And what I see in our town bylaws in 10B, signs in business districts, this is a... 17 West Main is a business A, is it not?
Correct.
So, it says that the sign that you can have has, well, can have the name of the firm and the products and services produced or available on the premises. There's no business there. It's a single-family residential. There's no second principal use asked for or allowed at this time. So, it seems like there's no reason to be asking for a sign that I can see.
Well, that's where the application comes into effect of what was asked for.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're not talking about the bylaws. This oversees the First Amendment constitutional rights of our civil rights of free speech. It was not designed or incorporated or made back in the early 1700s because of Brookfield's bylaws. The bylaws, that has nothing to do with this sign. Now, as far as Mr. Blake, talking about setbacks, I met with the state. It's going to be a 35-foot setback on that side from the center line. So, how do you know where it's going to be? It's going to be 35 feet back, and the state's going to make sure it is proper. Now, the rest of the sign is going to be according to the sign bylaws of the town Brookfield. I do not have to have... This is not a business sign. I don't have to state a business. I'm not going to run upset by a horse farm. I'm not putting any name of a horse farm on this sign. It's going to be strictly a freedom of speech, First Amendment sign.
You never requested the business use for a sign.
That's correct. I'm just making what Mr. Simons said. I want to make it clear.
And in regards to the Constitution, the 1700s, Dave, you do realize that there's amendments to that?
And there's more amendments. I know. We're not going to get into that.
But you're getting into that.
I just touched briefly, talking about your bylaws.
And there's case law, which Jeff had mentioned.
And I have a lot of them ready here.
Everything falls within that Constitution.
That's correct. And I got a whole pile of them ready.
So, Jeff, with... One second. With that being known, Jeff, not requesting a business sign, just a freedom of speech sign, what do you say to that?
Well, I think that even if there wasn't a business sign, although he did say something about horse farm, he still needs to, as he said, he still needs to, and I think he's agreed, he needs to comply with the bylaw. And the bylaw requires him to be 10 feet back. And I think that it's more than reasonable for the zoning enforcement officer to require a block plan to see that. And then, from there, he can then make his additional determinations as to whether or not there are sight lines or he's unduly obstructing traffic visibility. But for right now, you saw what was provided. That does not give the zoning enforcement officer, in my opinion, the ability to make his determination.
And we really can't do anything either.
Well, I mean, at this point, I think it's a yea or nay. Either you uphold the zoning enforcement officer's denial or you overturn it. But again, I suggest that he's not in compliance with the bylaw with that 10-foot setback.
With an application.
With his application and... Right, right. I mean, I don't know that at some point he may come in with a block plan and he may be able to remedy that. I don't know that. That's not before us here tonight.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He's double-talking. I just said...
No, he's not at all.
10-foot is the town bylaws. The state told me it's 35 feet from the center line on that side of the road, okay?
For a property line.
No. 35 feet back from the center line. So, I'm going to go back 35 feet and make sure it's on my land. Even if it's not on my land, they will go... Because all the signs up and down Route 9, we just had them up here. The selectmen ordered the state to come up and do surveys, try to get my sign removed. So, I was up with the state. They said mostly all the signs, fences, including the elementary school fence, by the way, is on state property.
This... So, this bylaw...
So, my point is, you're trying to... I'm telling you, I'm going to go by the bylaws of this town. It's not going to be 10 feet back from the edge of Route 9. It's going to be back according to what the state says. And that's 35 feet. It's not going to obstruct any traffic vision.
The bylaw states 10 feet from a public way.
Okay, well, I'm going to be back 35 feet.
It could be interpreted from that line of pavement to grass.
Yeah, but I'm going to go from the middle.
Or sidewalk.
The bylaw states from the curb, back 10 feet. I'm going to go from the center line back to 35 feet.
The state's right-of-way down there is approximately 5 feet behind the sidewalk. That's what the state owns. So, the way that I keep hearing it, he needs to be 10 feet beyond it. So, it's more than 35 feet from the center line of the road.
But that's where an Asbilt would come in to meet the ZVO.
Because the trolley, the trolley went from there. That's different in that area.
So, Jeff, he puts up another yellow sign at 17 West Main Street.
Green sign.
A green sign that's the sister of the yellow sign on 17 West Main Street. He meets our bylaws to the T. It's approved.
A point of order, Chairman?
No, no, sir.
A point of order, Chairman?
I'm not going to entertain that. I'm in the middle of a conversation right now, Tim.
We've been going back and forth.
Tim, I have not been going back and forth with this.
Okay, I give up.
Thank you. So, he puts up the sign. It gets challenged. Does he have a constitutional right, if he meets our bylaws, to put up a freedom of speech sign in that business district?
It's a political sign. You know, I want to see the sign that he puts up before I...
Who cares if it says, "Support our troops" or...
It's not a political sign.
Or, "He has no home here." What's the difference?
There are, as you know, Mr. Chairman, there are significant protections to the First Amendment. And, you know, I'd have to see the sign, but I'm just going to tell you right now, there are significant protections to the First Amendment.
Which means he has the right to do it.
Which means, you know, without seeing it, I mean, there are significant protections for the First Amendment.
Protections for Mr. Holcraft.
Protections for Mr. Holcraft. Protections for everybody in this room.
Which I don't want to see happening again. Tim, do you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I have a point of order. Thank you. Before we make this a national case, let's find in the bylaws where his putting up a sign is allowed. The only thing that I can see so far in the bylaws is 10C under the general sign regulations, number one. It says signs, announcements, or bulletin boards, and it won't allow you to go past 16 square feet. But the important part is that it's allowed in all zoning districts in connection with public use, charitable use, or religious use. Are any of these...
Those are all exempt.
...being asked for by the applicant?
His applicant in his statement here is freedom of speech.
Is that a public use? Is it a charitable use or is it a religious use?
That's all under freedom of speech.
Signs, announcements, or bulletin boards not exceeding 16 square feet in areas are allowed.
So, how are we going to define...
We've dealt with this at a selectman's level, and this is basically for the yard signs that are put up for realtors, for, you know, church functions, boy scouts, things like that. So, that's why that was in there. That was our take on that, and I believe it was concurred with town council. What town council is stating is that he'd have to meet Section B, number three, which would be the 10 feet back from the public way, not to be higher than 15 feet, and not to be bigger than 35 square feet.
What about C1, public charitable or religious use? Does his application fall under one of those?
Those are meant to be excluded from this because if somebody wanted to put up a yard sale sign or a real estate sign or things like that, that's why that's written into the bylaw. So, those people would be protected to put those signs up forever. If there's not a size, there's not anything on it.
So, but I'll repeat, I don't see that his request fits into anything in our bylaws.
We have town council...
There's nothing in these bylaws that will allow that. 3... 10B3 doesn't count because there's no business there.
But it's a business district.
But there is no business there. It says only advertising the name of a firm with the products and services produced or available on the premises. That does not fit that single-family dwelling.
And that's why I asked town council if he put that sign that met the setbacks and size requirements as a freedom of speech sign, where would it be? And what I heard is that he has the right to do that.
I don't see in the bylaws where he has the right to do that unless it's under... I could be wrong, but unless it's under...
I'd ask you to forward your questions to town council.
Public, charitable, or religious.
You can ask Jeff. Ask his opinion on your opinion.
I'm not the chairman. I'd let you ask him.
Jeff?
Well, one of the issues you run into here is content-based regulation versus content-neutral regulation. And I think what you're asking me here is whether or not, you know, the bylaws favoring one or the other. And I think that under the Reed case, that we start to run into trouble when we start doing that. And here, the 16 square feet appears to single out public charity and religious uses versus the one up in the sign district, which was more or less, I guess it says that you need to advertise a business, although I do say that his original application talked about, I think it was naming of a horse farm or something to that effect. So, I took it to mean that that's what he was going to have up there in addition to other stuff.
So, it takes a special permit to have a second principal use, and that premise is a single-family dwelling. There is no special permit that exists for a second principal use there. So, the horse farm, the business, whatever that is, it's not part of this discussion as far as I can see.
Can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
One sec. Jeff has to...
Well, I was just going to go back and tell you that in order for these things to pass constitutional muster, a sign law to pass constitutional muster, it most likely needs to be content-neutral. And any interpretation that we can give where it would be content-neutral, meaning that we're not going to try to favor some form of speech over another, commercial speech over political speech or political speech over commercial speech, then I think that if we can interpret the bylaw that way, that is the best way to do it so that it passes constitutional muster. And I suggest that the interpretation, I think that the zoning enforcement officer was giving here was of content-neutral and merely looking at where the structure was going to be, what the requirements were for the structure, the setbacks, the height, the width, the square footage.
Dave? No, the zoning officer, when I applied for this, the reason he denied me, he said it was not in the bylaws. That was his reason. Nothing else. It's not in the bylaws, you're denied. It's that simple. That's what he told me. And about a horse farm, we're not here for special permits. We're here for a simple freedom of speech sign. I don't care if it's in the business district or if it's down on Allen Road, Rice Corner, Lake Road, strictly, I can put the sign up. I don't care about the bylaws. They don't have any effect on this freedom of speech sign. It's not going to be a second use. We're talking about strictly just a sign. That's it. If I want to do, start selling horses or tractors at that location, then I'll come back to the board properly and say, "Hey, I want to do this in the business district." Okay? If I want to have horses there and I'm not selling them, I can do that. It's a right to farm in this town. The witch hunt in this town is going to cost all you taxpayers big bucks because I'm not going to take it from you people, and I'm going to keep fighting you. And I don't care. So, anyway, we're talking about a simple sign, and I made it very clear that I'm going to meet the setbacks and the state's setbacks. It's very simple.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Holcraft or town council?
I just have a question in general. Is bullying covered under First Amendment?
Through town council?
I don't care what anybody...
Jeff?
Of course not. Any reason...
Because that's what I think that sign mostly is, is bullying.
Absolutely. And it's right next to the school that my kids go to, and you're teaching kids that it's a pain to harass and bully people, which is not okay.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Go for it.
Thank you.
We're going to have order on the crowd, please.
Yeah, okay. First of all, it's not bullying. It's freedom of speech. It's no different than you people on the computers using phony names, saying all sorts of stuff about everybody in town. You don't even put your own names. A lot of you people are in here that do it. You don't like what's on the sign. That's not hate. It's just simple you don't agree with it, and that's where the freedom of speech is. And there's a big article, if you look at it, the Spencer New Leader this week, about freedom of speech in talking. You ought to read that. There's a lot of other articles out there through the country. You don't... Freedom of speech, people say, "Oh, it's hate. It's bullying." No, it's because you don't like to hear it, you don't agree with it. So, then you call it hate, and that's not the truth.
Herb, we're going to go through the board first, and then I'll open it up to the crowd. Thanks. Anybody else have any questions, comments? We're going to go through the board man first. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Danielle, Tim, Ken?
I spoke with the state man last weekend that came to look at his sign, and they put little nails in his parking lot and the whole, the brothers there, they got the...
Can we keep this focused on 17 West Main, not the yellow sign?
Sorry.
That's okay. Anybody else? I saw Herb's hand first. We're going to turn this around.
One question I want to clarify. He keeps saying 30 feet. So, where is he putting this sign supposedly?
As far as I'm concerned, this would fall back to the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector, so they would need that Asbilt. So, that this board is just basically either denying Mr. Holcraft's request or approving it. So, the onus...
Basically, right now, you've got nothing to stand on, so you're going to have to most likely deny it because you don't have any paperwork.
He would need an Asbilt.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess Herb didn't hear what I said. I said I was going to make sure that the setbacks are proper with the state, not with the town, because the state has bigger setbacks, okay? So, if it's 5 feet beyond the sidewalk or 6 feet, whatever the state says is what I'm going to go with.
The town would have to approve it.
Yes, and it's going to be done properly.[1700.62]
Yes, and it's gonna be done properly, it'd be all within the requirements of the town and the state.
Yes, ma'am?
I also wanna, I'm gonna butter.
You realize we're talking about sev- seventeen West Main Street?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, um, it's also a historical district, so I'd like to take that into consideration before applying for this, because I really don't want that in our, in our neighborhood. Um, from the previous things that we have seen, um, I think it's a very disrespectful sign that we have, and I don't want to go forward with that if we can. Um, and then also, and because we're a historical district, that's the first sign you're gonna see when you come into our town, basically, and it's never gonna be anything that's positive about our town. So with that in mind, I would really like the town to, to consider not approving this sign.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to address the board? Yes, sir?
Uh, as in the bar, I'm just curious, it always sounds like if this passes, and the sign for Salem Cross or Brookfield, it's up my head.
What do you mean by that?
Because it would be a second, I can add a second use to put up another sign.
This isn't a second use requir- uh, request, this is a sign request, and you, you have signs on your property as well.
I know.
So if you wanted to put up a Salem Cross sign, that would be a permit that you could apply for.
But it sounds like there is no, he's not asking for a secondary use of the-
Correct. He's asking, he's asking, he's asking for a sign, and specifically in the application, freedom of speech sign.
Period. It just sounds to me like it surpasses any other property in that business district could add another, a second sign.
I, I, but-
Yeah?
I'd agree anybody in town can, if they meet the bylaws.
Yeah?
Yes, ma'am?
At the last meeting, um, the board had discussed that there needed to be certain documents in place regarding, uh, financial matters, that if Mr. Holcraft owed the town any money, that that could be, there were some document that gets sent through the various groups of the town, and that that could prevent-
Well, the, the building permit requires a signature from the tax collector to make sure all taxes are paid.
And those documents are in order?
That has nothing to do with this board.
It's the best.
It, it doesn't. Any, any, any other question? Did that answer your question, Colin?
So-
The, the process-
So, so walk me through that, um, Steve, the process, please, so, at what point, say for instance, you approve this sign?
Yeah.
At what point do you learn that the person's finances with the town are in order or not in order?
The onus would be on the, uh, the building inspector, there's a sheet, a sign-off sheet that he has to go and get those signatures from, say he was building a house, he'd have to get it from Herb, he'd have to pay him money, he'd have to get it from the tax collector to make sure his taxes are in order. I believe the money that's in question has nothing to do with tax collection, it's with a, a special detail from the moving of the house, so.
So he owes the town Brookfield money?
No. From what, from what I remember, it was, it was Verizon that he owed money to, and there was a question about-
No, it's not true, I'm making a false statement.
Well, somebody had to pay the police office, so it had to come out of the town's account.
But it's, it's not on money, it's not on-
And the money in Brookfield has not been reimbursed.
But it's not, for me, it's Verizon.
And that's not on this board, right?
Right.
All right.
I, I hope you can respect that.
Yeah.
Sharon?
Point of order, I'm sure the planning board, I've researched this, the statute, which the town of Brookfield has adopted, said that permit granting entities, not the building inspector, any permit granting entities shall deny a permit to somebody who owes, basically owes the town money. I have heard this in the bylaws, Mr. Chair, so you are stating something that is factually incorrect.
Well, you're, you're incorrect because it was never presented to this board through the application, or-
It doesn't matter, it's in the town bylaws.
All right, Sharon, Beth?
So, a couple points, first of all, is, uh, um, the existing sign is, is really more in line with the bill board, bill boards are prohibited-
Existing, what do you mean by existing?
I'm, I'm referring to the, to the, to the current yellow sign. Um, however, what's, what's more important is that all signage is considered an accessory use, regardless of its purpose, under our bylaws, okay? So, any signage being an accessory use, okay, there's, there's been no, there's no, like, real coherent reason to place that sign there to the other latest points, historical district. An accessory use needs a special permit in order to avoid it being a detriment to the general atmosphere of the district that it is part of. So without having it as-built, without having clear definition of the size of the sign, the design of the sign, the color of the sign, okay, all those things, from a standpoint of in a historical district, an accessory use, you know, in a, in a, in a district that's really not intended for signage unless that signage is, is really in support of an endeavor at the property, okay? It, it leaves the neighbors open to a reduction in the quality of the general atmosphere of their neighborhood, okay? That's the primary purpose for limiting accessory uses. We are flying in the face of our own bylaw and the reason for protecting the abutters and protecting the neighbors from an, from an inappropriate accessory use of the property if we don't have firm, clear design parameters regarding what that is going to be in that area.
So Jeff, I ask you this, accessory use permit to the conversation. What say you?
Well, from my reading of your bylaw, I don't see that there's necessarily an accessory use component to it, um, but I, I'll just keep going back to the safety, the purpose of this is to regulate signs that obstruct traffic, visibility, that hold a danger through disrepair and throughout a collapse and disrupt the aesthetic environment of the town of Brookfield. So I think that these are all co- content neutral, um, bases for us making these regulations. So again, um, the, the fact that we have setbacks that need to be met, heights that need to be met, sizes that need to be met, I think are legitimate basis for regulating these signs. And the zoning enforcement officer has based his decision on those criteria, and not whether or not they, that, what, what the content of the sign is. Again, I think we have to be careful about talk, about being content neutral.
And if this board approves Mr. Holcraft's request, he still has to meet the requirements of the bylaws.
Well, I, I think that, well, yes, of course, um, but, but I also think that the reason he's denied is because he didn't meet the requirements of the bylaws, and one of those requirements was at least ten feet back from a public right-of-way, and I don't-
So if we, if we denied it this evening, he could reapply with those parameters?
He would have to reapply, and he would have to, I mean, you, you saw the application.
I have not.
Well, you, you saw the drawing, and I think that is the application.
Yeah, all right.
So, I mean, there, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot there that's, that's missing, uh, it, it wants for a lot of stuff, and one of them would be that plot plan, so as the highway supervisor points out, we need to determine exactly where it is. Now, you know, I understand from, from Mr. Holcraft's testimony, that there are, that there are, that, that there are others in town that have, that have built like a fence in, in the, in the right-of-way, so that's why we need to know where that right-of-way is, and, and a plot plan that, that plots all that out will give the zoning enforcement officer the ability to make his determination under the bylaw, not content-based, but rather safety, you know, safety.
Any other questions from the crowd, Peter?
Just going back to the other question about why we're considering this when Mr. Holcraft, if Mr. Holcraft owes the town money, so the question is, hasn't he been fined and, uh, for non-compliance for his other property? And, uh, aren't those fees still on the books while that whole issue is being appealed?
That, that's, when you appeal it, they're not relevant. A court has to rule on the appeal before they become relevant.
But the fines have been imposed by the, the zoning enforcement officer, and they're not-
And, and it's in a court of law now under appeal.
And so because it's pending, he owes the money until a court decides that he doesn't owe the money, so we should-
I, I would, I would, I, I, it's just, the court has to make a ruling.
Ultimately, I don't have the issue of expecting the fines, but I'm seeing that at least one property out there that fines were assessed on, it was one, I, I, I think it's, it's not the, the, the other sign property, but another one, but the way it works is if the fines remain unpaid, then, uh, during an enforcement action or the like, we would then go into district court, the district court would, would then do a show cause hearing to find out whether or not there was cause, uh, to issue, and at that point, it becomes a criminal matter, and it goes before a judge, and then the judge makes a determination that the fines are owed, and how much are owed, and it's not until that happens that those fines are truly, uh, uh, owed. And, and with respect to that chapter forty, section fifty-seven, there's also a process in that particular, in your bylaw, with respect to, to withholding permits for, uh, non-payment of, of fees, taxes, determines, and the assessments and the like.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we've spent a lot of time talking about this, um, word of sign disposition because of this section ten B three, and it says in ten B three that one sign or other advertising device of a freestanding nature may be erected for each business, um, so there's no business there, so I just don't see that ten B three has anything to do with this hearing, it's, it's not germane. What is germane is ten C one, and, uh, that's my point of order, 'cause I've said what it is, and I'd like to see if you'd like to entertain a motion.
Not yet, I wanna give everybody that came out of-
Okay.
-opportunity to say what they want to. Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
My question would be-
Through the chair of town council, yeah?
Through you, probably, through our attorney. Has, um, and I know this is well a new sign, however, my question is related to the current sign, has the current sign been reviewed in terms of harassment? The things that are put up there, are, are they, could they be considered harassment? And does that have any bearing on the new sign?
With, with respect to signs, with respect to the old sign, I don't think that it has any bearing on the new sign. The new sign should stand on its own. Um, the one, the, the one issue that I do point out is, it's my understanding that the old sign was actually erected in the right-of-way, so this would make the fact that you would get a plot plan even more compelling, uh, to make sure that doesn't happen again. With respect to what's on the sign, um, you know, I don't know everything that's been on that sign, I know some of the things that's been on that sign, and, you know, whether, whether we like it or not, the First Amendment protects a lot of that kind of speech, um, opinion speech.
And Colleen, I'm gonna tell you, in my six years as chair, we, we saw two opinions, and there were several opinions prior to myself, every single opinion came back that he had the right to do what he was doing.
One thing that does seem broken to this conversation is given a lack of quality and consistency in the application and the site plan, given that this, there is at least some historical documentation that the signage, times when the zoning board of appeals has issued a special permit, that the individual concern tends not to comply with the conditions of the permit, uh, I think that there's a pretty solid track record there, there's a pretty solid track record that regardless of whatever sign regulation you use, the one that has been erected clearly exceeds the limits set forth from a physical standpoint, uh, with regards to the size of that sign, so there's a track record of non-compliance with the details of the regulations with regards to our zoning laws with this particular individual. To me, as a town official, I would think it's incumbent on yourselves as town officials to at least consider the fact that given the materials before you, with regards to that application, that application does not adequately protect the neighbors per our zoning regulations, that the physical confines of that sign are gonna be consistent with the intent of this town's bylaw. You do not have that choice today.
All right, Beth, what we have before us is, is a request for the overturning of-
May I respond?
Of a, a one-hundred percent, I think you can do better than I can.
Yeah, first of all, we listened to Beth's propaganda once again, and number two, there's nothing in the bylaws because you people just want more, more, more laws in this town, there's nothing in the bylaw that says I have to do a sign a certain way, okay? And, and, and down my other sign, my other sign is perfectly legal, the sign, the town signed on it, the state knows it's in the state layout, so is everyone else in this, on Route nine, they're all in the state layout too, all the way through East Brookfield, 'cause I had it checked out, okay? So if my sign is wrong, everyone else is wrong, almost everyone, not everybody. So you can't sit there and spiel propaganda saying the sign's gonna be a certain way, it's not in the bylaws, show me, show me it's gonna do a sign a certain way, no, I'm gonna meet the signing bylaws, the setback, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Beth, I think we're both done.
I'm gonna make the sign by, it's gonna meet the sign bylaws, and it's gonna be a nice sign.
All right, Dave, so, so I, I believe that the application wasn't correct, Dave.
Or you can say whatever you wanna say.
I, I believe that Mr. Holcraft and everybody in this room has the right to put a sign up on their property, that, that's my belief. It's almost ad nauseam that I've, I've made statements in front of this town that my grandfather died for this country to protect that constitution, and you, you can make as many noises as you want out there, um, it's a constitutional right. I believe it, I would die for it myself, but unfortunately, I don't believe the application was correct. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to deny the request with the ability to reapply for the permit correctly. Do I have a said motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Yeah, we have, I have a discussion-
Do I have one second?
I have a discussion for that. When you write this up, um, I'm concerned about how you're gonna write this up.
It's gonna be exactly what I just stated.
Okay, well, if you're gonna have the reasons, I'd like to know the reason why you're denying this, generally, you do put down the reasons why you deny something.
We just did, because the application wasn't filled out correctly.
What part was not filled out?
The, the setback.
I just told you what the setback was gonna be.
In, in the application, Dave, it's not correct, you would, you would need a-
All right, so you, well, you can do what you want, in the meantime, I'm gonna reel in a hay trailer, I gotta get a hay trailer for my hay, and on the side of that, you want something to be nice, or you want it to be that way, so until you guys get your stuff together, that's how it's gonna be.
My belief is that you get your stuff together.
No, no, no.
Get, get a plot plan.
I don't, I don't, I don't even need to come before this town, I can just bring in a, I can bring in my hay trailer and put a sign on it.
That's your right, the, the issue before us-
Then that's fine.
The issue before us, as I see it, Tim-
Okay, that's good.
Is the setback.
I mean, I knew you had a vote this way.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna appeal your decision on that.
There's no appeal, there's, there's a, there's a motion, and there's a second, we're discussing it, you can vote in favor of the motion, or you can vote against the motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, um, um, ask that you guys vote against this particular motion, because we can bring it right back up again, and we can put different reasons down. What I think is the correct reason for denying this permit is it's not because of the ten-foot setback, that is absolutely bogus and erroneous, erroneous, the, um, the only way that we can, well, it's not in the bylaws, anywhere in the bylaws to allow his sign, unless possibly it's under the one where it's, um, in connection with public charitable or religious uses. And the way you write it up just leaves the door open for more and more trouble, and it's just, well, I think it's kind of consistent, what I've seen with this board, so-
We, we just-
I'm, I'm asking for this motion to, uh, be denied, and we'll make another notion, a motion, just because we deny the, this particular motion doesn't mean that we can't deny the appeal.
We, we had, we had over forty-five minutes of conversation, which kind of primarily revolved around the issue, why Jeff states that Mr. Thomo denied the permit, which was the setback, so this has everything to do with that setback and the bylaws that are in effect.
Right, now I'm saying that that's incorrect.
All right, so duly noted.
Mr. Chairman, that's not the reason I was denied, you're, and the same thing with Tim, same thing, it's not in the bylaws, just because it's not in the bylaws does not mean you can't do something in town. How about yard sales, is, what page is that on?
We've, we've gone over, that's, that's what Tim's referring to in regards to those three issues.
Yeah, you're not, you're correct, so the bylaws do not have, does not reflect what I'm doing here, except the size and the setbacks.
What I'm hearing from town-
And I just told you what this, I just told you the setback was gonna be proper.
I don't think he's getting it, we need, somebody needs to say, with mine John, wherever it is up.
I understand that.
Why?
I understand that.
I'm gonna deny it.
But you people don't get what I'm saying.
You, you're not getting it.
You're not getting it, Bill.
All right.
It's not in the bylaws.
All right, Dave, we're, we're done.
I'm done.
Any further discussion on this?
So I'll bring you back your little measurements, Bill.
Dave, start.
Fine.
Any further discussion on the motion before us?
I will.
Hearing not all in fo- in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Nay?
Danielle, are you for it?
Boy.
You're for it? So three to two, the vote carries?
But-
Yes, sir?
You need a super majority.
I know.
So you have essentially granted as a paper?
We did not.
Yes, you did.
We, we'll make another motion. We're just, I'm, I'm saying we're denying that motion that you made, because I think that motion-
It was, it was, it was very clear, the motion that was on the floor and what you voted for. Jeff, can, what do you do now?
We can reconsider, we can reconsider right here.
That's right.
Move for reconsider?
So, I, but, but, but the reconsideration would be the motion that we voted on, correct? So, but the reconsideration would be the motion that we voted on, correct?
Well, it would be to reconsider a, the denial slash grant.
So I'll entertain a motion, Tim.
Aye, okay.
So it did not carry, Pat?
Okay.
I move that this board deny the appeal.
Hold on, hold on. You moved to reconsider, which would be a majority vote. You moved to reconsider--
Okay. I move to reconsider the motion that we deny this appeal, and for a particular reason.
No, so you have to, I'll entertain a motion to reconsider the vote that we just took. Correct, Jeff?
Correct.
And if we don't?
If it doesn't pass, then--
Can we make another motion?
Yeah.
We didn't approve the appeal, we would just deny the motion. We can make, why can't we make another motion for denying the appeal with a different--
Just get the documents to make our decision.
That's what I want.
But the permanent motion to deny--
He did this to us.
I just feel like this is--
Doesn't mean that necessarily you can grant the appeal, does it? He's not going to do it anyway.
I mean, I'm trying to tell you how to get--
So the reconsider--
You move to reconsider, all in favor EPS, and then you make another motion. That's all. Amend it.
Amen?
No, you wouldn't amend the motion. You would then make another motion. You'd move to reconsider the matter, and then make another motion.
Oh, the matter, that's what I want, thank you. So I move that we reconsider the matter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion, Tim.
Okay, so I move that the board deny the appeal from the applicant for the reason that it does not fit the bylaws. There's no place in the bylaws that allows that particular sign. And I can be specific if you want to--
That's your motion, do I have a second? Hearing no second?
There's no second?
Hearing no second, I'm going to make a motion to deny the appeal based on the fact that there is no setback listed.
On the application.
On the application, that would be coherent with our bylaw. So basically the same motion that we voted on last time. So do I have motion?
Have motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? And again, we just learned the hard way that if there's not a four to one vote, the vote carries, the applicant gets his permit. With that being said, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Was it a unanimous vote?
Yep.
A unanimous vote? Permit's denied.
Okay, I'll be back in the trail, we'll be brought in. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion--
You have a science movie.
Entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:55. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
So Kenny? How come you--